I'd like to call the meeting to order. Go call, please.
Mayor Wiggins?
Here.
Mayor Potemse.
Here.
Councilor Hickey?
Here.
Councilor Povenkori and Councilor Davies. Councilor Povenkori and Councilor Davies over to the house.
Thank you. At this time, I would invite you all to stand with the implication which will be delivered by Pastor Mark Bigford of the Church of Christ, and followed by the flag salute that Mr. Hickey will lead.
Our Father, we are so thankful that you have given us life and given us life in this city, and that we have the blessings of freedom and opportunity, and the opportunity especially to worship you as we feel obligated and fit and can rejoice in it. We pray that we will do that, and thank you for all of the blessings that we do enjoy. We thank you for this city council and these servants that work for the city as well, that help to make our lives better. And we just pray that this meeting will be one that is held with only the best of intentions and that we will honor each other as we consider the items that are on this agenda. And we pray these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Ready pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Miggs. At this time, we will consider the consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk are considered to be routine and non-controversial by city staff. Consent items will be considered first and may be approved by one motion if no member of the council or the audience wishes to comment or ask questions. If a comment or discussion is desired by anyone, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered in listed sequence with an opportunity for a member of the public to comment on that one. Are there any consent items that anyone would like to have pulled in the audience? Council?
Motion to approve consent as presented.
I'll second that.
We moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The record show it was a three zero vote. Audience oral and written communications. The city council welcomes public comments on any items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. We respectfully request that this public forum be utilized in a positive and constructive manner. People addressing the council should first state their name and area of residence, the manner of city business to be discussed, and the organization of persons represented in the thing. Comments directed to an item on the agenda should be made at the time that that item is called up for discussion. Questions on non-agenda items directed to the councilors' staff should first be submitted to the city clerk in written form no later than 5:00 PM on the Monday preceding the council meeting. Is there anyone in the audience who has any public comments this evening?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Peter Graff, City. This is Tom. There we go. Did you hear me? Okay. Last couple of times I've been up here, I've asked you guys to do your job as far as councilpersons and hear my matter. Have any of you refreshed yourself or even taken a look at what I've even spoke about or just kind of washed it out of your mind?
As far as I know, we are not going to comment on this.
Okay. And what is the restriction of not commenting? I notice that seems to be the big response. Can I ask why?
Well, that's what our legal has instructed us to do.
And legal being Tom?
I'm the legal here tonight. But the HR attorney is the one that is handling the matter that you speak of. That's Jay Johnson of Leaver Cassidy.
Okay. And Jay has directed you two?
No.
Or, well, Hank has directed it the other way. He's asked you not to respond to it based off of what, though?
That's correct. It's a potential litigation matter. You've mentioned that several times.
Litigation in what context?
Well, the context you've mentioned, time and time again.
Which was, I don't recall.
Well, I do.
Okay. Can you tell me?
Yes, you threatened to sue the city.
Okay. I mean, you don't think that's applicable to this? I mean, I had a contract.
No, but they don't respond.
Well, I thought I was asking you a question.
No, they don't respond to someone who's threatening to sue them.
Well, sure, I understand that.
Well, you sound like you understood that.
Well, I'm done trying to finish talking over you.
No, I'm trying to educate you on why they're not responding and why they're not going to respond.
That's not an education, that's just a simple advice by a third party. But what you're doing is stalling because what you have is a contract agreement. That is a union agreement between you guys, the city and the city administrators, and the police department. And why can't you adhere to that? Why can't you follow what you said you were going to do? And how many other contracts are you in breach of? Is it just this one because it's specific to me? Because I wouldn't testify against this man at grand jury? Because Greg doesn't like me for the first lawsuit? Is it just me? You know, I took a sworn oath, and when I told the truth, I thought that would be respected. But it wasn't, I was damaged, I was punished for telling the truth. How can you live with that? You don't care that I have kids? You don't care that I have a family? You're okay with your actions? You have a moral obligation, an ethical obligation, to hear my matter. And why you can't do that is beyond me. And you just want to sit there and stare. No response is because a third party, an attorney, tells you not to. You can't respond to yourself?
No, because you threatened to sue them, so they're not going to respond. I'm asking them not to respond.
Well, sue, I mean, sue. It's a bad picture. It's a bad picture. It's a bad picture.
You keep asking the same question.
Exactly.
Every meeting.
And I'm going to do it, Tom.
And you get the same response.
And I'm going to do it.
Okay, that's fine, you get the same response.
And you guys have your job, you got the timer, you're supposed to overtalk me, then she's going to remind me of time. It's the same old game every time, I get it.
You're out of time.
But I'm glad to acknowledge you, I do. Okay. So morally and ethically, you can live with your actions, Ms. Wiggins?
You're out of time, Mr. Graff.
That's what you're going to use. It's always a run and hide. See you next time.
Anybody else in the audience have any comments at this time for the council?
My fellow city council, a Christian city member doesn't attach me. I'll state it again, I've been a union rep, and if the contract was being violated, the union rep should be here and making the case. And for the last four weeks, or four meetings, we have not seen a union rep present. So that speaks volumes to me on to the validity of the claim. I understand his frustration, I'm not quite sure why Mr. Graff wants to work so bad for the city that obviously doesn't want him here, but...
But he did nothing wrong, right?
But nonetheless, I think it's a waste of our time to continue to hear this. If he's got other methodology to get what he wants, he should maybe pursue that.
Well, that's their job is to hear us.
The job of a union rep.
They need to wait a second, Tom, and then you can...
Excuse me. Any other public comments?
Councilor Davies out of Carrollway. I guess I should have addressed my question to Tom. You should have got the claim last week. I didn't know if it was being rejected or if it got back. Something I would love to talk to the city council about and prefer to, you know, look at rationally. So just wondering what's the timetable on that, what should I expect?
I'll have to go back and review it. I think we got two plans from you, don't we?
Well, yeah, the first one was rejected on a...
No, it was insufficient.
Insufficiency, okay. Well, this is much more recent and much smaller, you know. It's something that has to be really considered and looked at, you know. But my rights as a citizen are being violated, you know. And now I've got people that have been attacked in my house and have my car's keys stolen. These things cost $425 to replace a chip key. I wasn't allowed to go back to my house to retrieve my keys, but the person, the other person was allowed to go inside and grab his sweatshirt and then also my car keys. And I missed work, you know, I missed two jobs. About $450, $500 started to do a weed abatement because I don't have a car, you know. And it costs me $425 to do that, borrow money from my mom. You know how embarrassing that is? You know? You know, there's a lot of things, my biggest achievement, the things that I value the most in life are my education, my accomplishments. You know, here's one of my college degrees, here's my high school degree. This is my Eagle Scout Award. This is by far my... Well, the funny thing is, it's not this that represents, you know, one of my accomplishments. It's a symbol. You can take all these away from me, and you can't take this away from me because I did it, you know. Then there's this. For a few years, I was disenfranchised because I was born in Canada. I sorted out, couldn't get a license, couldn't get credit. I dropped out of college, moved home, or go back to Canada, you know. But this right here, my American citizenship, these rights, they're not guaranteed. They can be taken, stripped away from you, you know. And here's a copy of the Declaration of Independence, and, well, I'm going to fight to protect this. I'm going to keep fighting, you know. And, yeah, it's not just you. It seems like there's a pattern here, and it's gotten, it's gotten to be really barren on me. So I hope you take a look at that claim and hope we have a positive and constructive conversation about it. Thank you, city council, Madam Mayor, and everybody else who attended. That's all.
Any other comments from the public?
Good evening. My father Wes Clare, Director of St. Jude's Anglican Church here in Tashby. And I'm just giving you a heads up, we'd like to have added to the agenda for the next meeting of emailing your staff for a proposed resolution that might be of help in the community. We have in town quite a few folks in the 15 or more years I've been here and 35 years our church has been around. We've seen quite a few folks who come repeatedly for help, not because that they're not trying. They often just don't have the ability to acquire the extra work that they need to become more independent. But they are employable. And so we have an opportunity as a congregation to assist these folks and let them become independent and help them on their path to become taxpayers rather than resource consumers. And this is a life skills ministry that we're establishing in St. Jude's. And to hit it really off the ground, we need more space than we're currently renting. We have a goal of acquiring property that we had lost on Curry Street. And as I was saying again, we have an opportunity, I think, to acquire it. If we can get enough right money to support this ministry endeavor, we'll go partly towards that, but mostly for the goal of having an area that we can train these individuals and allow them to make them more independent. So part of that help to give the grants would be perhaps an endorsement from the city council in our endeavors to acquire these grants. And so propose a resolution at the next meeting to that effect. And with that, I'd like to offer any open for any questions. Certainly we have some of the June 3 meeting. Any input from your folks? Otherwise, I want to thank you for your time.
I'm just, Father Clare. We've spoken already about this issue. I've advised him to speak to the clerk about putting an item on the agenda.
Okay.
And that's why he's here tonight to introduce it to you. So, you know, with Greg on today, my comments to you guys would be let, please follow through with emailing the clerk the information you're requesting and then between the city manager and the mayor, they can determine whether it will go on the next agenda and we'll let you know.
Excellent, well means. So just to give you a heads up that we're bringing this to your attention, and I thought I'd bring it to you verbally in addition to the email.
Great, thank you.
Of course.
Any other comments in the audience? Okay. Oh, sorry.
Good evening. I'm Corey Torres, I'm the newly appointed interim general manager of the Park Districts. I just wanted to quickly and formally introduce myself to the council and staff. And I'm really excited for the opportunity. This is my second city council meeting since I was appointed. Just looking forward to the opportunity to continue the work that's been laid out before me and my former predecessors and working with the city and the council. So I just wanted to quickly and formally introduce myself. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right. With the disbursements and bills for RSI, Mr. Davies isn't here, so I guess I can just entertain.
I'll make the motion to pay the RSI bill as presented by staff.
Second.
We moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The record show it was a three zero vote. Development Services Director reports?
Oh, Mayor, council members. The first item I have for you tonight is a request for a finding of public convenience and/or necessity per the request of the Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control, ABC, at 480 Stuber Road. We bring these to you from time to time as a reminder when a given census tract, it's an old law, but I think it's old law. And a given census tract, if you have a certain number of alcohol selling establishments and you reach what they term to be saturation, meaning you have enough for the formula that's within the law, then each additional license beyond that must come before the local jurisdiction, in this case, the city council, for a finding of either public convenience and/or necessity. They give us very few rules or guidelines on what would constitute meeting that threshold. And so typically, our response, as you guys would know from staff's position, is to recommend them unless we have, you know, in order to allow businesses to prosper, unless we have a significant reason not to. As you will recall, an example of one we didn't do was a request from Fast Trip recently to add hard alcohol to their license when there were so many businesses immediately adjacent to them that they could provide that service. In this case, it's 480 Stuber Road is the old 58 diner out by Stuber and Tashby Boulevard is being remodeled. We're waiting on the plans now from a gentleman who wishes to reopen it as the Prime Bar and Grill. He would like to open it as a family-oriented bar and grill type restaurant. So in that case, the type 47 license is the appropriate license. It authorizes the sale of beer, wine, and distilled spirits for consumption on-site. It does also allow for consumption off-site, and that at first caused a pause with me, but we did go and confirm that that is an appropriate license for, for instance, like an Applebee's restaurant would carry a 47 license where you might have a bar. This is the appropriate license. Miners are allowed on premise. That's the distinction between this license and a full bar license. I have spoken to the police department regarding this issue. They have no objection to this item. And so therefore, city staff concludes and recommends that the city council go ahead and grant a finding of public convenience and/or necessity for Prime Bar and Grill to conduct onsite sale of beer, wine, and spirits, a type 47 ABC license at the location. Question? Be happy to answer any questions you have.
Are there any questions or comments from the audience concerning this? Council? I'll do a data motion.
Motion on staff's reputation.
I'll second it.
We moved and seconded as presented by staff. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The record show it was a three zero vote. Cherry Lane South Side Sidewalk Project.
Very good.
Say that three times now.
Honorable Mayor and council members, the second item I have for you is that project, the Cherry Lane South Side Sidewalk Project. In 2008, we were awarded an active transportation grant for the construction of additional sidewalks and pedestrian crossing improvements on Cherry Lane. In short, the area is from Tucker Road to Elm Street, which is the entire length of Cherry Lane as it falls within the city limits. I take that back. There's like a block of it west of Tucker. So I am remiss. Anyway, we proceeded through the design process between that time and 2018 and now. We completed the design, received authorization from Caltrans to bid the project, and in March, advertising began. We opened the bids for this project on May 8. The results of the bid listing are there for your review. In compliance with the Public Contract Code, we undertook a review of the bids and confirmed that the low bid provided by DOD Construction is deemed to be responsive. The project from a funding standpoint has no match requirement. $462,000 is programmed for construction and construction administration. Therefore, the DOD price at $397,850 is projected to be an acceptable price in addition to the city's costs associated with executing that project within the budget. And therefore, we do not anticipate a fiscal impact to the general fund or any other funds that it would be completely grant funded. And as a result, we therefore recommend that you award the Cherry Lane South Side Sidewalk Project a DOD construction in the amount of $397,850 and authorize the city manager to approve any necessary change orders up to a maximum of 5% of the original contract or $19,892.50. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the audience regarding this process, this bid? Council?
I think it's a really excellent project. My only question is that DOD Construction's literally half or less of the highest bid, so you're comfortable with the bid?
I anticipated that question from the DOD's recommendation. The first two bids, as you can see, are relatively competitive. The second two are relatively not competitive. That is, the first two contractors, this is the distinction. All four of these contractors are known to us and have worked for the city in the past. The first two contractors are principally concrete contractors. That's the bulk of their work. And this project, I failed to tell you guys, I apologize, I know we've spoken about it before, but for the sake of the audience, the intent of the project is to construct completed curved gutter and sidewalk for the entire length of Cherry Lane on the south side from Tucker all the way to Elm. And then it also includes some safety improvements at Elm because we've received a number of complaints from the residents in that area about cars coming around that kind of blind curve in an unsafe manner. And so the project includes some pedestrian flashing beacons to alert cars that pedestrians may be crossing the road in that location when it occurs. And so the project is about 90% concrete. So those two contractors specialize in that work. The other two contractors, Grant and Griffo, they're well-known. Grant is a national company. They specialize in asphalt work and sometimes do concrete, sometimes subcontract it. I also think the later two are very busy right now, and these numbers represent the hope that perhaps they'd be the only bidder. That happens pretty regularly on bids that we'll get one or two that are really outliers. So the engineering estimate for this project was right around $400,000. So the DOD number aligns with what we expected. I think the other two are just a toss out there by the other two hoping that maybe they'll be the only ones that will magically have enough money. So, yes, I am comfortable with the bid provided by the A.D.
Thank you. It's a very well-traveled corridor by foot traffic. It'll sort of, an area that's on foot going to the commercial area of Tucker. So I think it's a very good project and in favor of it.
Jay, what are some of the other projects that DOD has done for the city of Tashby?
They've only done one in my tenure here. They did the widening and remodel of intersection of Pinion and Curry. So right there by Tompkins Elementary, we did a safe route to school there a number of years ago. And I would happily report that we had a good experience with them. Their field teams, their crews were responsive to our issues and produced quality work. I mean, there are always little issues on a project, but we had no major issues with them. So we were satisfied with the bid they received and happy to recommend the work to you all.
That is also becoming a major thoroughfare because people are trying to stay off of Tucker, me included. So it's gotten a lot busier in the last few weeks. So it's a good thing. All right, I will. Yes, sir?
I just had a question about the triangle between Valley Boulevard and Cherry Lane. Is there anything on the book going forward in the future to address that? Because I know one of the things when I was going door-to-door and talking to people was that they complained about speeders going down, especially Oakwood, Elm Street, Wilbury, those streets especially, people complained a lot about speeders going down. There's a lot of kids out there, so I just, you know, I don't know if it's ever been something that's looked at. I know you probably make long-range plans and have goals that you're going towards, but it's something I think is to be very helpful to look at because nobody wants to get run over. Thank you.
Yeah, so noted. I don't know that I've actually heard anyone like that, but I would invite anyone in the public who's, you know, lives on those streets that experiences that to, A, start with, this is our common answer, we do get calls in general like this about, you know, somebody speeding down the street. First call is to police department. They will, they will come do more regular patrols down the street if you're having a chronic problem. Now, if you just have that one teenager on your block who's giving you a hard time, we do recommend, we still live in a civil society, that you go maybe knock on the door and talk to the parents if you're comfortable doing that. I know that it seems like it's always a riskier thing nowadays than it ever used to be, but, you know, we do have other options. You know, we try not to put in traffic control devices for, you know, one person that's not behaving correctly. But let us know if you've got a concern, we have a complaint, online complaint. It's the best way to do it. You can call City Hall and let us know, I live on so-and-so street and I'm really experiencing this major problem. If it's speeding like that, if it's an enforcement issue, my strongest recommendation is to just call the police department, let them know, it'll be nice to you when you call, and maybe that'll solve the problem.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? You entertain a motion?
I'll second it.
No, I can't make it, I just entertain it.
All right, you'll entertain the motion, I'll make the motion. I'll go.
I'll second yours.
Great. Aye.
Small round. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The record show it was three zero. Number 10.
Good. Honorable Mayor and council members, the last item that's not consent that I have for you tonight is the program supplement agreement and resolution. As you guys are aware, effectively every time we go through a grant-funded project that includes Caltrans, sometimes numerous steps during the course of that project, we have to sign a supplemental agreement with Caltrans. Again, we have a master agreement with Caltrans that governs our receipt of their monies in certain programming situations. And from time to time, they ask us to approve a supplemental agreement. So this is standard fare. The project in this case, program supplement agreement F-027 for the HSIP, which stands for Highway Safety Improvement Program, Enhanced Pedestrians Crossing Project. And so this project is a small project. It includes the construction of pedestrian flashing warning beacons at two locations in town. One at Tompkins Elementary, right there at the crosswalk that is in front of the school. And the second one is on Valley Boulevard at Mill Street, where a couple of years ago, we had an unfortunate pedestrian fatality in that location. And so we identified this project as a way to produce a higher visibility for pedestrians crossing those locations. It's only pedestrian activated, meaning it won't, it's not a traffic signal or something that's going to go off all the time, but only when somebody wants to cross the road. And so we applied for this HSIP project. And so the first step is for us to produce the design for the project, and that's what this program supplement agreement is for. And so the project, this phase of the project is estimated to be no greater than $35,000. For HSIP projects, we have a 90-10 split. We do 10% in match on this project. But of course, for the next year, that means $3,500 is what we're committing to, which we do have budgeted. So therefore, or I should say, will be in the forthcoming budget recommendation to you. We recommend that you adopt a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign and execute program supplement agreement number F-027 to the administering agency state master agreement number 095184F15, project number HSPL5184033. Any other answer questions?
Anybody in the audience have any questions concerning this? Yes, sir?
I might have missed some of your figures, Jay, but I was just wondering, after this amendment, it's gone to over 109,000. What was it before the amendment?
I think you're on the wrong item, George. I think we're on, are you talking about number 11? Number 11 is the Eighth High-Speed Rail Amendment, which was approved under consent.
I think this is the High-Speed Rail.
Yeah, that one, we're on the previous item.
Oh, all right, sorry.
And since it was approved by consent, if you want to chat with me afterward... And since it was approved by consent, if you want to chat with me afterwards, I'll fill you in.
Okay. Do you have anything that the city manager wanted to have reported?
We haven't had a vote yet.
Oh, I'm sorry. I can't keep track. Are there any questions from the audience concerning this? If not, council have any questions?
Motion on staff's representation.
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded as presented by staff. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The record shows it was 3-0 vote.
I'm just going to report to Greg how quick this meeting was. That's my plan here, anyway. So I have no report for you tonight.
All right. Council, any reports? Do you have anything?
Madam Mayor, I just have a couple of quick ones that I think probably our Public Works Department may need to address. Some folks in my area that use Dennison Road on a regular basis, where the sharp part of the asphalt, if you're headed north on Dennison before you get to the intersection with Tatchy Boulevard, there are a couple of sharp corners in the asphalt as you approach that intersection. People have tried to cut that corner off to turn right. Before the rain hit the other day, I actually went over and measured it, it's about a foot and a half deep. And I saw a car that had a front blown tire again. That's the second one that I've personally seen, but I think if we could have somebody go over there with either some road base or even some quickset asphalt and fill that in, that would definitely save a few tire and alignment visits for the individuals that are impacted in that area. The second area is on Valley Boulevard, westbound, right after the stop sign, and I think that's Anita that comes up. Oh, sorry, Snyder. It's the same scenario, there's a sharp turn right there, and you can see where people are starting to cut that corner. And I didn't get out with a tape measure on this one, because it's not nearly as deep as the one on Dennison, but it's still fairly significant, and I think, you know, a couple of bags or shovelfuls of gravel in that would probably take care of it. And that's all I have, Madam Mayor.
All right. I would just like to remind everyone that our June 3rd council meeting will begin at 3:00 PM, as the council reviews the budget, and then we'll continue until time for the regular meeting. So if you have budget questions, now's your time. And otherwise, if you don't have anything else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion? Seconded.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Good night.